The the third official council meeting is now in session. But uh even just within the past couple of days, the efforts that we have been doing in town have been tremendously successful. We have built a wonderful community here with people that was in place long before myself even arrived. And we've been able to make a very good and smooth transition into making this work in a very synergistic and and uh cooperative fashion for the whole of the community. The first objective that our order has basically had at the very beginning is getting all of the new people their backpacks. That has been a tremendously successful endeavor and is going phenomenally well. The second endeavor that we've been having with this organization is to bring everybody together towards one goal as a community, which as so far we have been doing a tremendously good job at that as well.
A report from the treasurer. Uh, right now, I believe we are at um whatever Lucian has uh plus seven hundred and then we also have the uh gold we just got. How much gold was that?
That was a hundred and twelve bars of gold. So times five.
Okay, so yeah, we've got about five hundred. Yeah, five hundred and sixty plus.
Well, in my treasury, my treasury is the the treasury of my ATM is sitting at about one thousand seven hundred.
Okay, so we've got about uh close to three thousand, I think. Uh, we're going good towards being able to fund whatever endeavors we want to. Uh, it's looking like we have suppliers for wood. Um, let's see. I should actually address that in the proper section for that. So first, uh, copper, wood, and then stone. So copper reserves. We've been a little bit critical on that. Solution did just go mining and pulled up a bunch. I also got some from Jackie. I'm not sure where she got it from, whether it was mining herself or where she got it from someone. I believe Gasher said he's got some contacts who wanna sell it, uh, so we're gonna be able to buy some from there. Uh, I think right now we're sitting at about, what was it, a hundred and well, it's whatever Lucian has. What do you have in your backpack?
Oh, I gave it to you. It's in your backpack.
Oh, never mind. Well, we have in my backpack, which is a hundred and fifty seven uh copper. So that should make a significant amount of backpacks. Um, hopefully we won't have anyone bulk buying it. If we do, I guess, I mean, it'll give us more buying power to get more ore, but um.
Also tell people not to bulk buy if you haven't already.
Yes. Yeah. Um.
Specifically in the copper or all of the backpack ingredients?
Just literally all of the backpack ingredients.
Uh, the last three, primarily the the backpack ingredients. Now, the um, the wood, I don't know. We might be fine with that to a certain extent. Um, primarily, uh, because if people are buying it to go put it in the furnace or something like that. Ideally, we're gonna be keeping the furnace topped up and really nice and high. Um, we've uh, well, I'll just kinda go into the next one of the the wood report. Which is that um, we've got a supplier who claims they're gonna be able to supply us three thousand per week. Um, so that should go well if we can do that. I don't think we'll be sucking up all of that. Now, if we are providing wood for the forge, we may go through that. Um, and there is the backpack material. Um, stone. We have, uh, I wanna say two hundred and something stone? I'm not sure off the top of my head exactly how much it is. Um, we can always use more stone. If anyone has more stone, that would be greatly appreciated. Um, we do pay for that. Um, it is based on people who are higher levels. So the pay is gonna be uh for stone and wood. Uh, two hundred and fifty of the item for, I believe I said twelve gold earlier today, right?
Two hundred.
Yeah, that's.
Twelve gold.
Huh? Two hundred and fifty for twelve gold of the of the wood and the stone.
I'm sure you've done the math for that. I'm just gonna say it seems a little low.
Yes.
It does seem a little low, but that's because we're selling it.
It it was a little bit lower, but.
Like I understand why. I just wanted to say that.
Yeah, it is. It is very low. And that is like Lucian was saying, because we're selling it for two. But beyond that, because we are also trying to build up some so that we can fund other endeavors, such as um, we did uh put out, I mean, in the grand scheme of things, given our current budget, it's not that big of a deal, but we did put out around five hundred to, oh, sorry, not five hundred. Uh, we did put out about uh fifty to seventy gold in the uh server reset to get everything back online, as well as a bunch of wood.
Turning in resources, who would that go to? Would it be like the department head for whatever material, like mining would get copper?
Uh, probably me or Lucian, and then we can get it to whomever. In most cases, you can probably get it to anyone on the core um core council, and then they can get it to us. Uh, we can do whatever we need to.
It'd be really useful if you could get iron to me, because I'm gonna be making tools for people.
For copper bars, we're gonna be buying those at a hundred and uh a hundred and forty gold for a set of two hundred and fifty. Then stone, two hundred and fifty, we're buying it for uh twelve. Again, two hundred and fifty of wood, we're buying for twelve. Uh, copper ore, we are buying for uh forty-five per two hundred and fifty. Now, part of the reason why these prices are a little bit lower is because we are currently at least offering to buy as much as anyone can provide us. Uh, we may have to change that later, but right now that is what we're offering. Uh, this will allow us to stockpile a little bit, hopefully, so that when we do have server resets, we can go and bring everything back online. For example, if we had the copper bars in the machine when the server went down, I would have been able to go around and throw that in the vending machines, for example, as well as the gold and wood for those.
We're selling the ten wood and ten stone at two gold per ten.
We're buying for twenty-five percent of the cost that we're selling.
For now, because we don't need a huge profit margin, let's bump bump let's bump that up to fifty.
Okay. Now, you gotta keep in mind.
We don't need that huge profit. The main profit there is being made from the copper.
Yeah. Keep in mind that what we're, when we're doing this, we're offering to buy it as much as they can provide us. We're not buying that at all currently.
Correct. But from the way I see it, nobody, nobody's gonna bring us two hundred and fifty wood for twelve gold.
There's there's not a lot of mystics on this server. So, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we can bump that up. Do you think that they're going to at twenty-five gold?
You will get the case, no?
At twenty to twenty-five gold, yes, because wood is so, wood can be gathered firstly very quickly and secondly very safely, unlike copper and unlike stone.
You realize you're making an argument for being cheaper, right?
No, 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 that's not my point. My point is is that it'll be readily available and it'll also be something that people will more readily bring us. Therefore, we need to give them more of an incentive to actually do so.
Some of us are just nice people and we're gonna do it anyway. There's that too.
Yes, and there are a lot of people like myself. I can go out and gather five, six hundred to a thousand wood myself and donate that into our reserves as well for completely free. And I'm going to do so.
I think reserves.
But we're trying to encourage other people to do so so that they can then get gold so that they can then spend that gold on the other things we're setting up in town with the blacksmithing, with the carpentry, with the gatherers, with the tavern, everything else that we're setting up. We're encouraging people to have the money to spend the money.
I'm thinking like as of now, the mining can be incredibly lucrative on the deliverers part if they get lucky and they go down on a reset. Cause you can get thousands upon thousands of copper in one run very easily if you go down at the right time.
Yes, currently telling anybody that which is pretty damn profitable for them, that we will buy the ore from them for a pretty penny, well over a hundred gold.
Yeah, so.
Which is kind of the reason why I'm thinking bump up the prices just a little bit. Like not as much because obviously it's harder to get copper than it is to get the other thing which is easier. Um, yeah.
Jackie finally made it. Jackie, you you haven't missed too much. Nothing you already didn't didn't already know.
But yes. You're right. Fifty does sound good. Much better than.
Yeah, well, no, the twenty to twenty-five.
No, twenty-five. Fifty would be, we would be making nothing.
Which is fifty percent.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Yeah. Um, just because it's been hard to track, I've been eating the cost of the renting of the machines uh personally. So um ideally, I will change that. Um, but currently I have not been able to track that. So I have just been eating that cost myself.
Yeah, there you go.
Um, and I have been noticing um the cost. So that's part of why the lower prices.
Is that something that I could donate that cost for those vending machines?
Yes.
Sorry, what?
Those gold coins. Is that something that I could donate to you?
Yes, gold coins will help with that. Yes. Yeah.
Okay, alright. Know what it. Yes. On that one, since he just made that point, anybody who is aware, the 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 market stalls do require us to pay a daily tax to keep them opened. It isn't a huge amount.
Oh, it's more than daily. Yeah.
Yeah, but it isn't a huge amount. I'm talking about how much it costs per day, basically. But it isn't a huge amount, but it is an amount and it is an overhead that we do have to take into consideration. So donations towards that end, anybody at any time can please make them. However, be aware of this fact right here. Uh, every single time I personally go down into the mines, I bring up a shitload of gold. I am currently holding a hundred and thirteen gold bars. That right there will cover those costs easily.
Yeah.
So don't worry about it too much. We will cover it. But at the same time, any donations of any type and of resource, of gold coins of any form is greatly appreciated.
It looks like it's potato. Um, so if you guys uh would like, do you have anything you wanna uh present in relation to this venture currently?
Um, not at the moment. Um, we can provide food when needed. Uh, just.
Oh, yes. Yeah.
As, you know, donation.
Um, yeah, so one thing for new business, I'm gonna wanna bring that up. But essentially, we're starting to form a more cohesive uh coagulation of all of the guilds together into, well, for lack of a better word, a government.
Is anyone getting?
So for the heads of the departments, um, blacksmithing will be distributing metals to to distribute to the various blacksmiths. Um, the blacksmiths will be um, the ones who are officially sanctioned town blacksmiths by this organization will be agreeing to provide new weapons to the new users at uh five gold per, which they will get the metals from us. Um, head carpenter has agreed to uh when wood is provided, provide uh or do the actual carpentry for those handles. Uh, we will be providing wood to the head carpenter to distribute to said carpenters. Um, similarly.
Question.
Um, mining, we haven't figured out the details of yet. Um, but we are working with Project Compass Rose, um, or sorry, with the Compass Rose Company on one of their projects, which may help out a lot there. Um, new business, um.
Okay, I had a question.
Yes. Oh, sorry. I don't have any vision of anything right now. Go ahead.
You were speaking about the blacksmith being responsible for making the weapons for people, but uh who did you speak to or you did you come up with this on your own?
These are specifically.
Well, you're not your guild specifically.
And these are specifically council sanctioned blacksmiths. So you aren't one of those yet, but we're going to make an application process for you to apply for each.
What it basically means, sir, is that you guys that are doing your own thing, keep doing your own thing. It has nothing to do with us. But what we're trying to establish.
Okay, I didn't, I already had a um a membership of blacksmiths in your uh council. Cause I was told there was no.
We do.
Organization of blacksmiths.
There wasn't. When we made it, there was no other blacksmithing organization.
Yeah, hold on, Gasher. Let let Lucian talk.
Yeah, we do currently have most of the actual like veteran blacksmiths and stuff that have been around town for the longest time that have all the perks and skill points. Most of them are already part active members in the council. But understand the point that I'm attempting to address here, which is that you have no concerns as to how that's going to affect you personally or any other blacksmiths in town because it won't. Premise here is to create a.
Unless you want it to.
Unless you want it to. The premise here is that what it's going to do is it's going to create a system, again, addressing back to the point earlier. It will, we're bringing a purpose to the gold coins in the game that at present has no purpose or function. What we're going to do is we're going to establish a system wherein a new guy comes to the blacksmith and says, hey, blacksmith, I want an iron pickaxe. Here's five gold coins. The blacksmith will then make that guy a pickaxe. Problem solved. Or an axe or a sword.
So you're providing services rather than just supplies. I like that.
We're we're doing all.
Yes, that and the five.
Yes.
The whole nine yards step of the way.
Yeah, the five gold.
Now, part of it is.
I is only for noobs. We will only be providing that to new players.
Yeah. However, in the future, when it gets down the line, you will, any player will also be able to walk in there and say, hey, blacksmith, I want a Valiant Greatsword. Here's a hundred gold or however much it begins to be priced at at that point.
With that five gold, that's um with us supplementing that. So we're providing iron to the blacksmiths who have agreed to be part of the program.
So the only work a sanctioned blacksmith has to put in is the actual forging and creation of the weapon.
Yes.
Or tool.
Yeah. And then they get the five gold. And while five gold is not how much you would normally charge for a weapon like that,
Just to make it.
it is for free, essentially, other than the work. That's one of the other reasons why I currently have lower um costing on on sale or on the purchase of items is so that we can buy other things like uh when we start having to buy iron for that project and other things down the road.
Yeah.
Now, question, when you said fifty percent earlier, did you mean just on the stone and wood or on everything?
No, just the stone and wood. Copper's already good enough.
Okay, good. Okay.
When you were talking about, like, somebody can go up to a blacksmith and says, hey, I want a Valiant Greatsword for, you know, X amount of coin, are there gonna be like pictures in Discord of like items that they can like players can go and like look through and say, okay, I'll.
That's a good idea. I like that idea.
I think that's where we see it being ultimately.
That is a good idea. Personally, though, the way I have seen most of this working is an in-game process. So in a very basic sense, it's like really walking up to a real life blacksmith. If you don't know what you want, he can't make it for you. You get what I'm saying? And if you don't know what you want, but you look at the blacksmith and say, hey, blacksmith, I want an English longsword from twelfth century England that looks just like the one King Edward the Third carried at blah 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 party. Do you see what I'm saying? If you get too specific, then it's not gonna be something that's actually gonna be satisfactory. For the most part, the way it'll work is you walk in and you say to the blacksmith, I want a Valiant longsword. He is then going to make you a longsword. It may not be exactly how you imagined it, but he's gonna make you a longsword.
Well, what if, you know, I didn't, I don't know much about swords. I mean, I know a short sword, a long sword, you know, but I don't, I don't know what.
Yeah, when you're ordering, you should know what part you're ordering.
Yeah, and if you don't, I'm certain that the blacksmiths we have down there will be able to walk you through that. But your idea is also a good one.
Also the wiki helps.
So wiki.
Yeah, I think we'll have a little bit of each. We'll have like suggested items for like, you know, essentially not for noobs, but for people who've been here a little while, but they don't know a lot yet. We might have like a buying guide, right? And it says here, this is a suggested um sword, and this is the average price you should expect to pay for it.
Like you go from here to here to here.
You know, and then, you know, or if if we get to the extent that we want to do this, and this depends on what the group and the various guilds involved decide, uh, if we want to go the route of establishing exact prices for things, we could say this exact set of stuff is this price. And if you come to any town blacksmith, this is the price they will charge you for this exact weapon, right?
Correct. And that will of course variate. Obviously, if you walk up to the blacksmith and you say, say you want this rapier right here, and you, you already have the hilt, and you already got the valiant and you've already got the palladium. Blacksmith will maybe charge you like five gold because you're not, he does not provide any of his own material.
Cause they just have to bang it out.
All your, yeah, all he's gotta do for you is bang it out. You're giving him the valiant and the palladium to make all the individual pieces. So he'll be like, yeah, or he might even just do it for you for free, depending on which blacksmith is down there. When it gets pricey is when you walk up to him and you say, I want this exact rapier with a palladium guard, palladium pommel, palladium crossguard, and a valiant blade on it. Then he's gonna say, ah, that's gonna be like two hundred something gold. You get what I'm saying?
Or whatever he says it is, yeah.
And you you really do need to know which parts you're saying, cause if you say I want the ornamental guard, that certain blacksmiths will come out with the foil guard because that is classified as an ornamental guard, but it might not be what you want.
Well, I mean, that comes down to just shopping. That's just shopping. Yeah. Yeah.
Alright, he still has another question.
Um, whenever we figure out who's like the council certified blacksmith, carpenter or whatever, can we maybe like take a picture of their face and put them in Discord or just a name?
I like that.
Have something like a little.
It's just mugshots.
Yeah, actually, currently, currently, as it goes, speculative, their names will be in the town council Discord. They will have been put up there and their names.
Mugshots, yeah. Yes, currently we have rules for that. Sure. You had expressed a um desire for a police force. Uh, I believe I've heard rumorings that there is a guild that does that, or if there is.
There's a guard, but a lot of the members are not active right now.
Okay, well, maybe uh if we've got, if we have the ability to get them in here and get them active, that might be good. Um, and if we do maintain um a significant amount of uh in-game currency, then we might be able to um help facilitate that if that is our desire. Um, I don't think that we necessarily directly should be uh running said guild, um nor running a police force ourselves. I think there is value in having it in the game, um at least for immersion value. And if we do decide to go this route, we could possibly um say that we can give the guild a certain amount of gold to distribute within itself um per X amount and pay their um.
And purge. Missed that.
their guards and whatnot to be able to facilitate that for us. Cause I don't think we want to be managing a police force.
At least not currently. We again, for future, maybe, but right now, no.
Yeah, at least not yet. Maybe down the road, but definitely not now.
Right now, we can take, so obviously there'll be individuals can do such things of their own fruition, but in the future, it was something maybe we can pay people, compensate them in gold coins for.
I specifically mentioned it because there was someone who had not been in the game for more than an hour and he had already had a Valiant Longsword because someone had given it to him and that could be dangerous. You know what I mean?
But that's something that you can't really control.
I see that. Um, yeah, I mean.
Yeah, we can't control that. I can't.
No, but I realize that you can't control that.
I I think what he's saying is more.
But the the guard would make it so it is less dangerous. You know what I mean?
I think what he's saying is he's worried about a new player coming in, not understanding, and then just going and trying to kill people with the Valiant sword, which they would be able to do with a Valiant sword.
Ah, I get. That makes sense, yes.
Yeah.
Um, and so if we have the town guard for that, we're not gonna really have that. Now, I will say, when I first got in the game, I did see someone up on one of the guard towers guarding. Um.
That was probably test.
And that was a uh very cool experience for a new player to have. And I think that that has a certain amount of value in immersion and getting people to understand, hey, this isn't just chaos. I can't just do whatever, you know?
Fair enough. It's also a double edged sword though, because um that.
Um, so. Yes, that's true.
Set on guard could, you know, that does have that power and they could end up abusing it for their own gain.
Absolutely.
This is true. Um, and I mean, that's part of why having the backing of all of the guilds is very powerful in that respect. Because if the.
Yeah, it's like the same thing with, sorry.
Because if the guild, uh, or if the, you know, guards get out of hand and the guild itself does not take care of it, then the rest of the guilds can.
Uh huh. I feel like the Vatican already does something like that, but they're not so patient in the US server, so.
Ah, okay. Yeah.
Yeah, I feel like the Vatican basically does something similar. And.
Yeah.
Maybe we feed them on board somehow.
Yeah, so either if we can get them on board or if we can get the um guild and resurrect it that is here, or possibly even if the if we find someone who's interested in starting that guild and running that guild themselves, uh, we can throw money at the problem.
Yep. Yeah, I might be able to. Okay, fair enough.
You know, um, and and so that's a solution that will help. At least they'll be able to fund it. And I think that might have been part of the reason why it died before, the other one that he was talking about, is they were just sitting there for hours, probably. Something.
Rich Armelian? Richard is fine.
Oh, Rich Armelian. Sorry, I couldn't see it from here. My game's lagging hard.
Um, I just wanted to ask, I was curious, are these going to be a scheduled in advance thing or are they gonna be regular every day or?
We will try. Um, I will probably have a uh meeting schedule channel in the Discord that will have the upcoming meetings posted in there as soon as we know that they're going to happen. Um, would anyone be interested? I'm not making any promises yet, but would it be, wouldn't be interested in like a Google Calendar for this?
I think a Discord calendar is more than adequate. And to answer your question more more appropriately, Rich.
Yeah, yeah. That's what I think.
There's twofold for that one. Number one, we can have impromptu meetings as just kind of a general thing. Because we're just starting out now, there's a lot of the finer points of the business aspects of this that we have to go over regularly because it's important to keep it well versed and to keep you guys informed as to what's going on. As time progresses, that notion and that information will become less relevant, especially to you guys individually. The second point is, is that this is at its core going to be a democratic organization. We will be holding votes. Your opinions will matter on organization and how to run things. So you guys will get to say and determine on how and what and what's going on. So the primary answer to your question is, we will let you guys know when and if there are important things that we need to get at the town council together to vote on. Otherwise, no. Your your participation in these meetings is neither mandatory nor is it truly required unless we need to actually hold a vote. You yourself, Richard, if you tomorrow get on and none of us are here and you come up here and you're like, you know what? I wanna have a town council meeting. You can do that. Go for it. Nothing is stopping anybody from doing that. But the entire council must be present, at least the head members, whenever we're holding any kind of an important vote. So for that, we need to have an actual scheduling where we can on the Discord state in big bold red letters, hey, guys, this is the problem that needs to be addressed. These are the standpoints. This is who's supporting which. So far, we need to hold them, being in order to hold a vote. Because otherwise, these meetings don't truly serve a purpose for you guys individually, but mainly for us to go over what is going on. I hope that answers your question a little bit more appropriately.
Yeah, excellent. It's mostly I wanna stay up to date, you know, just like if I was voting on, you know, a real life politician, I'd wanna know what's going on ahead of time.
Correct. And the Discord will keep you up to date on most of those things. How it works with uh town uh the town council supporting other individual businesses. Anybody at any time can come to us to sell resources. Specifically, it will more than, for now, it will more than likely have to be either myself or Efrain. We're the only ones that have access to the town treasury currently. So if you guys find or meet or you yourselves come across or happen to acquire craploads of uh copper ore, wood, or stone, you will for right now unfortunately have to either bring it to myself or Efrain in order to sell it for a profit margin. So that's that part. As far as support and how we support the other organizations, the blacksmiths, carpenters, farmers, tavern owners, wood gatherers, and anybody else that has been sanctioned by this council, meaning they come to the meetings, they have met with us, and they have agreed to be a part of our organization, they will receive support from us with no obligations, no contracts, nothing like that. It's all on a volunteer basis. Every single bit of this will be done on a volunteer basis and only for as long as the other individual is willing to take part in what we are doing. We will provide the blacksmiths with basic things such as iron. We will ensure that the blacksmith doesn't have to worry about running low on said iron so that he can fulfill his purpose of building the tools for the new guys or for anybody else that comes in. With a future goal of.
And um. Uh, before you do actually, um, before you do actually get the role, you will have to show a certain level of competence at performing your skill, cause someone walks up to you and says, specifically for blacksmithing, someone walks up to you and says, hey, can I get a sword? And you don't even know how to forge a weapon. That's not gonna be good.
Yeah. If obviously if you're a competent blacksmith, none of that'll work out. But for future endeavors. Yeah. If obviously if you're a competent blacksmith, none of that'll work out. But for future endeavors, this will also eventually lead into the council being able to provide the higher grade materials as well. We are working in conjunction with a couple of the other projects that exist currently in the game, uh, that will probably more than likely, from what I've been hearing, is going to start providing this council with an unbelievably high amount of pretty much everything. We're gonna have a crap load of wood, crap load of 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 mithril, silver, gold. We'll have it all, guys. All of it will basically be being provided, if you think about it, think about it like buying from a business in bulk sale. We will be able to provide things like mithril to the blacksmith at a quarter of the cost of what he'd be able to get it anywhere else because we're providing it to him to fulfill his purposes and functions. These same concepts apply to all of the other businesses and functions like that. One moment, uh, Hokage, I will remember that you have a question. To address the point that Efrain was making directly with how can other organizations get support from us? The archery guild is a good example of that, as well as any of the other guilds that exist out there. If those guilds specifically want uh support from us, all you guys need to do is ask. That's it. Just ask, and if we can, we will. Simple as that. That's the quick answer on that one. Hokage, question?
It's just, this game in general as well, the more players there are concentrating on, for instance, mining, then that provides no point for other people to go mining and less profit for other people to go mining. So it does feel like this organization is discouraging people from becoming journeyman, um, which as a general term means to do everything.
Yes and no. I I think the point that you're making is fairly accurate and we will have to see how it pans out as time goes on. But the point of this is not to uh to discourage any one individual from pursuing or doing whatever it is that they would like to do. In fact, anybody at any time can join the town council and fulfill no role or all roles. Depends on what you are willing to do or put into it to do those things. Now, as far as people who, let's say, from your example, that they don't really want to be a part of this, but they still want to go do it all. They can still maintain a profit margin because we won't be the only ones. Once this gets established and we begin to set basically, think of it as setting a baseline for the economy, other people will also start to see the price of what we're doing and understand, you'll have a private individual who sits out in the middle of nowhere, who says, hey, these guys over here are buying up copper ore for a hundred and forty gold coins. Well, I can then go over to the guys that are coming out of the mines and I can walk up to them and say, hey, I'll buy that copper ore from you for two hundred something. You see what I'm saying? It will create competition, which is good. That is exactly what we want. It doesn't all need to revolve around the council itself. And any one individual that wants to go be a miner, be a blacksmith, be a carpenter, if they want to do it all, good for them. That'll mean great opportunities and enterprises for them individually. And nothing that we do will prevent them from doing that. Does that answer your question?
Not entirely, but
All right, well, maybe perhaps
I have a bit on that. I might be able to answer his question entirely. So, um, what I see us doing is I I I hear what you're saying and I've thought about that problem myself. I don't think that we will be discouraging completely people doing things, but we will be encouraging people in specializing. So we're we're encouraging specialization as opposed to having to do everything. Because right now, you don't have a choice. You have to do everything for a large extent. You don't completely have to, but you kind of do. Um.
Say someone like really doesn't enjoy mining, which just gives them the ability to go up and buy the things with money that make they make from the stuff
Alright, just to make sure that we're fully understanding your question, Hokage, go ahead and ask it one more time. See if you can phrase it perhaps, um,
Essentially, like
Unless I answered it.
Uh, from a personal perspective, right now I'm even having difficulty finding mithril as an ore simply because of the number of players that are able to go deeper now with less difficulty due to the televator, which has made it more difficult to find ore on your own. If a new player comes in, they have no uh crystals or they only get twenty gold and they want to go mining for something, their most they're ever gonna get is red iron, which is what I end up picking at. And I have no ability to seemingly get luck on mithril ore. But I feel like if we have, if we get the council, then it's gonna cause even more like stockpiling of resources that people don't, I don't know.
I I now I fully understand what you're saying, and that's the scarcity of the resources due to the fact that the basically the mines are going to be strip mined. And you are correct. There are two things, two points I can make on that, Hokage. Number one, that is exactly how it's gonna happen, and there really isn't anything that's gonna change that. Because even if we don't do it, the other veteran players are gonna do it. So whether we do it,
And make it probably regulate the price and make it a little bit more affordable for other people to get Valiant.
Yeah, correct. The best that we can do is we can regulate it so that that way, yeah, maybe you can't go down there and find mithril, but because we were able to go send a party down there, we're gonna be able to get it to you for a reduced cost. You'll be able to find it. Unless of course it is literally the actual experience of going down there and getting it that you're actually looking for. And if that's what you're looking for, unfortunately, I don't think anything we do or anybody else in this game does can actually solve that. That is a problem of the fact that
Hmm. Could we invent
Developer question.
Could we invent that art, like mining guides and venturing guides and stuff?
That's a developer something genius.
Yeah, because like
Yeah, we could absolutely do something like that.
Now, that's one thing is we do want to provide um a ideally, we want to find and provide mercenaries who will um who can be hired to go and escort you down as well, uh, which will allow people to get further down.
I don't like the name mercenary.
Any other, any other questions, concerns, or comments?
Oh shit, he's got
One thing I'll say on that, uh, Hokage, um,
I have I have the point three of the six.
Yeah. So Hokage, we do, I can't say much about it, but there is a plan in the works that we are involved with, which will um bring up resources that should not impact the people who are entering from the top.
Correct. Yes. And and Efrain is correct. We are working in conjunction with a project that is going to be able to, in some ways, solve what you're talking about. But I would argue, Hokage, that what you're talking about doesn't, it won't have anything to do with us or what we're doing. The main reason that you can't go down in the mines to level twenty five or thirty and find mithril is because there are veteran players that literally went down there five, six hours before you did, and they got it all. And that doesn't have anything to do with us.
Yeah. Yeah. Oh, yeah, I think the respawn time is is, what did we figure out? Like something like eight hours. Yeah.
Efrain returning the wrap up. Quiet.
That is something that we could address the devs with, the respawn times, since there's more players on the server.
Yes, that is something we can take up with the devs.
Is the only way you
That is another point, just think this
So you could also make a a smaller personal mine that's like, it's more scarce in resources, but it's all only yours. So like no one else can go into it. That's the only way you could really fix that.
Separate instance is what you're saying, like a separate instance.
Yeah, like your own kind of person would help.
Yeah, but that is something, yeah, that's something we'll have to take up with the dev team at a later date. Gasher, your question, sir?
Um, with council-supported blacksmiths, uh, they're being delivered the materials to make these high-end uh weapons and tools. Uh, how is them keeping any of it for themselves gonna work?
We haven't figured that out yet?
Yeah, we haven't gotten there yet, Gasher. But basically, it'll work in a very basic sense, Gasher. We will encourage them not to keep it for themselves. Whatever they want to keep it for themselves for.
Unless they're paying full price.
Unless they're paying for it. If they pay full price for it, then they can keep it for themselves. If they go and get it themselves from the mine, they can keep it for themselves. But otherwise, if it's coming from, if if we go out of our way to provide the blacksmith with a hundred Valiant, it better damn well not go straight into his vault.
Maybe have some kind of ordering system on Discord so we can keep track of who orders what and therefore we know that this person had one hundred Valiant and they fulfilled this many orders. So we know that when they say, hey, I'm out of Valiant, and we look at the list, you should have fifty Valiant left.
That's a good idea. That is a good idea.
So I I keep um I keep very detailed records of everything that comes through me. So if we want to, we could have all of the resources come through me in some manner or be reported to me. Um, I'd have to figure out exactly how that would work, but if we do that, then I will have very detailed records of who has what and how much they have and how much they claim to have done.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good public Alright, George has had his hand up longer. George, your turn to talk. Sir, what's your question?
Oh, George. Sorry, I didn't see him over there.
No, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna go on whatever I'm just saying, just have the heads keep their own records of all the people in their professions. They can have the heads report to you and make your life easier.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll have a hierarchy for delegation of the structure. Basically, a a a
Yep, sounds good.
a a top-down pyramid structure for delegation, like a military structure. That sounds about right to me. Any other questions, concerns, comments? Questions, concerns, comments that are not from Gasher.
So then say
I think I saw several over there.
Alright, Gasher, what what's your question, bud?
I almost jumped off the cliff. I came so close.
That's not a question.
That's not a question.
Yeah, that's not a question, Gasher.
Suicide has not been approved by council.
So, uh, then for the distribution of materials for blacksmiths, uh, would we, uh, would it all go to me and then I would divvy it up to the members of the blacksmith role?
It kind of sounded like people were wanting it to come to me and then I would distribute it to you. And if you're not available, I would distribute it to the lower level ones.
Well, it depends. Basically, like Specular's idea and and the mix in with Jurge, Jurge's i- Jurge's idea was a good one. We can structure this in a very, in a, in a very structured manner so that basically we can have a delegation system. Below the treasure will be two or three other people, which can be delegated to three or four other people, which can be delegated to six or seven other people. You get what I'm saying?
Pyramid scheme. Basically, basically the heads.
Basically a pyramid scheme. Yeah, pretty much.
The heads don't handle the money or the items. That's all you. The heads just keep a record of all the people in their profession, what they're using, if they use to get, if the orders have been fulfilled and all that stuff.
Yeah, and it will come by supply and demand. If the blacksmith has received fifty orders for swords, then we know he needs to, he he'll know he needs to go to his superior and say, hey, I need X amount of resource because I've got blah 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 orders to fill.
So I think what Jurge is saying is basically I'll keep um the resources in whole in bulk and records of everything. And then you'll come to me and say, hey, I've got all my blacksmiths. We need X amount for the next X amount of time. And then I provide that to you, record it, and then you say, you know, okay, so-and-so has made this many of this, so-and-so has made this many of this, so-and-so has made this many of this. They report all that to you, then you report all that to me, and then I give you more resources.
Yeah.
Okay, so the, um,
Alright, I think that, I think that pretty much addresses that as well as it should be addressed for now because most of this is future speculation anyway. Specular's question was what kind of transparency can we expect here? And full and total, absolute openness, no secrets here, none whatsoever. This is not a cult. This is not a secret society. Tell everybody that you meet or anybody that's interested or anybody that you know or anybody at any time, anybody, anybody can come and take part in these meetings. There are no requirements. There are nothing. Anybody for any reason, I don't care if they've got one hour in the game and they literally just showed up, if they want to come and take part in this meeting, they can. And they will also, anybody that shows up at the meetings gets to have a vote in anything that we vote on. For what we are about to vote on is what we want to charge for the wood and for the stone.
A selling price of fifty percent or a selling price of twenty five percent. Keeping in mind that twenty five percent will give us more margin for other things like the endeavors with mining, uh, iron and other things.
So what's this basically, what it basically boils down to, guys, is do we feel that the prices of these things should be paid out larger to people, such as making twenty to twenty to thirty gold for for a lump of wood or ten gold for a lump of wood? Because people will more than likely bring more to us if they're making more money, but at the same time, that means less money in our pockets to spend on other endeavors. So to make this a very simple vote, yes or no, one more time. If you think that we should be charging or paying twenty gold coins for two hundred and fifty wood, raise your hand. Alright, I think that's pretty clear. We're gonna make it a ten. So Efrain, keep that in mind. It will be ten gold coins paid out for wood. Now, what that means, and now again,
Okay.
And by ten, do you mean?
Ten or twelve?
We mean that we're paying, well, yeah, the the twelve, because that was the lower price.
Okay.
So what that basically means, guys, and this is a good example of the democracy that we're attempting to build here. I personally disagree with that. But everybody else voted against it, so I'm cool with that. I don't give a damn. I'm cool with that because it is a democracy.
Like
My freaking
Yeah, it can't always be rude.
Gasher, I'll get uh
No, although you find your head
I don't, although I
Yeah, yeah. I'll plaque Jackie on the back and and jury on the back.
If the game completely changes, some people insist it's still final.
I'll go camp at the sunset on the back.
Exactly.
I did, brought my controller here too.
If you get one wood per tree, it's still final.
standing this primary point, which is that everything we are doing here, everything that we are attempting to do is for the benefit of mainly the new people. It is mainly for their benefit, not for the council and not for the veteran players. It is mainly for the benefit of the growing community so that as the new people come in, the game grows. People are like, wow, look at this game. People are actually like building a civilization. I want to go play that game and be a part of it.